Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this, all the benefits you've given us, all the gifts that you've given us here in our community. We ask that you give all our leadership, the wisdom and the knowledge to be able to make the right decisions in this community. Watch over our firefighters, our public safety police officers, the men and women that keep this city safe and keep them out of harms way. Amen.
At this point, we're going to face the flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I want to say good evening to everyone. Council members wishing to close on anyone?
Yes.
The announcements, yes. Councilmember Cruz Baca.
Olivia James, who passed away this past week, that was so instrumental, not only as a civil rights activist, but also with the Democratic Party. Our condolences to her family and to all the Democrats that marched side by side with her. And we will be losing an incredible advocate for the Democratic Party.
Thank you very much. Yes, councilmember.
I also would like to send our condolences to the families of the victim of this morning, I'm sorry, yesterday morning at the grocery stores. On behalf of the council, I'd like to let the family know that we're with them and we send our condolences. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Mayor.
Yes, City Treasurer.
I would like to close in memory of Virgil Sweet. She was Maria Contreras' sweet maderna, which is my maderna.
Our condolences. All right. Anyone else? Okay. If not, at this point, we'll go ahead and request for the attendance. So, Madam City Clerk, or City Treasurer, thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Councilmember Cruz Baca.
Here.
Councilmember Susan Rubio.
Present.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
Present.
Mayor Patim Monica Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Manuel Lozano.
Present. Thank you very much. Thank you for that. All right. So, we have several presentations here this evening. And the first one that we have is the presentation by Michelle O'Connor of the update on the Puente Hills Landfill Park Master Plan Project. Thank you. Thank you for being here today. Oh, yes. I'll note that. Oh, yeah. That's right.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and to share what I think is a really exciting project that the county is taking on. Again, my name is Michelle O'Connor. I'm with the Los Angeles County Department of Parks and Recreation, and I'm the project manager for the Puente Hills Landfill Park Master Plan. I realize we don't have a lot of time to go through this presentation, so I'll try to be as succinct as possible. But I have provided you with a small handout that was just recently created to help spread the word on this project that has more information. And it has our project website address, which is www.puentehillslandfillpark.org, where you can get much more detailed project information if you're interested. I've also provided some additional copies of this at the back of the council chambers, so if anyone in the audience would like to take one or take some home, please feel free to do so. So, our project team is pretty comprehensive. The project is being led by the County Department of Parks and Recreation, but we have a really dynamic consultant team that is represented by a lot of different disciplines that are really required to take on a complex project like this. We have some really strong project partners. We're working closely with the Office of Supervisor Don Kenaby, as the project is located within the 4th District. But we're also working closely with the Office of Supervisor Hilda Solis, since the project site abuts the 1st District, and a lot of the future users and benefactors of this park are in the 1st District. And then, of course, we're working with the sanitation districts of Los Angeles County, because they're the owners of the site, and we'll maintain a presence on the site for many years, as they're responsible to maintain the site to ensure public health and safety. So, some key project details. We're about halfway through an 18-month timeline. We have $35 million in funds dedicated from the sanitation district to this project, and we intend to use 30 million for our first phase of construction. So, we're really fortunate to be in a position to develop the long-term vision for the site, but then also have funding to enter into the first phase of construction in the next few years. So, there will be some real tangible public benefit for this project in the near future for the region and your community to enjoy. This just highlights kind of the magnitude of our project. It is a regional park project, since it will be over 100 acres in size. So, while it will serve kind of the local community needs, it will also serve regional needs at a 25-mile service radius. So, this is just a helpful exhibit to orient you to the site. When we talk about the site, it's important to note that our project is actually situated at the top of the landfill site. It's around 142 acres of the 1,365-acre site, and it's the area highlighted in orange. We have the western deck, which is the area that will be primarily focused on for our first phase of construction, since that's been, it's the oldest area of the landfill that's settled the most. We have the eastern and southern deck that will probably see more interim development, or limited development, in the coming years and not reach their full development potential for 30, 40, 50 years. We have really gone through great lengths to engage the community to date. We've had several community workshops and pop-up events. We've gone and interviewed key stakeholders for the project. We have a technical advisory committee that we meet with regularly to ensure that we're kind of covering all of our bases. But even with that, it's not done. We know that for a project of this scale and magnitude, we need to continue to reach out to the community and make sure people are aware of the project, so they can get involved now or in the future, since this is a long-term implementation for this plan. So, this just shows kind of where we are. We've had four community workshops to date that have led to the development of the plan that I'm going to share with you tonight. And right now, we're really campaigning strong to help spread the word in the region that this project is happening. We expect to have our fifth community workshop in June, and that will primarily be focused on our environmental impact report that we're currently preparing, all with the end goal to go to the Board of Supervisors this fall for approval of the master plan. So, this is just an aerial overview that helps give you some of the context for the site. Our site is outlined in yellow, and again, it's the three decks that I mentioned that are the top of the landfill, and they're bordered to the west by, it's bordered to the west by Rose Hills Cemetery, as well as Rio Hondo College. And it's bordered to the south by the Puente Hills Habitat Preserve, and to the east by the community of hacienda Heights. And then, you can also see the 60 and the 605 freeway, as well as the San Gabriel Mountains, excuse me, the San Gabriel National Monument in the background. So, this just gives you, I think, an indication of the regional context and importance of the site. The landfill is kind of the terminus of a 26-mile wildlife corridor, the Puente Chino Hills Wildlife Corridor, and it's also part of a designated significant ecological area. And this is the last kind of contextual image that I'll show you. I think it's important, again, I keep saying that our site is, our future park site is at the top of the landfill, so it definitely presents some challenges in terms of accessibility. But then, I think it also presents a great opportunity to provide a destination, you know, hilltop park for the community to enjoy. So, this is the high point on the site, and from it, you can see all three of the decks. This is the western deck, again, which has been the most settled, the eastern deck, and the southern deck. Just going to play it one more time, and I think this is helpful, because it really illustrates that there's a lot of grade differentiation between the decks. Over time, as settling occurs, it will be relatively even, but for now, they're definitely spread apart and separated by topography. And then, I just have two images that show that this is a post-industrial site. I think we are really trying to embrace the fact that it's a post-industrial site versus mask it, because the pipes that you see here will remain. They actually collect methane gas that's converted to energy. So, through our project, we're really trying to celebrate kind of the history of the site as a landfill and help tell that narrative through educational programming, as well as interpretation. So, we have 12 essential project objectives that the master plan truly embraces, and the first and probably the most important is that it's a park for all. It's intended to offer diverse, healthy, and active recreation for users of all abilities, ages, and interests. The second is that we want to create a unique regional destination that really celebrates this site, and we want to provide a range of recreation and outdoor fitness opportunities, provide a gateway to nature for new audiences, particularly those that are underrepresented. We want to ensure that both recreation and habitat are well-integrated and balanced, and that wildlife habitat connectivity is provided for. Environmental sustainability will be demonstrated through the design of the park and then also the operation. We want to provide multimodal and universal accessibility, educational programming and interpretation, and I think that's a real, an area where we will really work to engage your community in developing those programs. What we've done, our focus primarily on to date is really the physical elements, but what this project and the future park really lends itself to is providing a great variety of programming opportunities. So, we will be looking to set up a meeting probably at the end of summer, in September, with all of the local cities' parks and recreation departments to really collaborate on programming opportunities and partnership opportunities. And then, we would like to have a captivating trail experience that helps alleviate some of the pressures from the outlying trail system, so you can come to this site and recreate for, you know, either a couple hours, a whole day, and get a rewarding experience. And of course, public health and safety is paramount, and we have to really be careful about balancing the operation of the parks with the maintenance by the sanitation districts. And similarly, we're trying to balance a lot of different objectives here, dealing with the constraints of the site, the needs, the recreational needs of the overall community, and then the sometimes competing interests of our adjacencies. So, this is the conceptual plan. I think on the, I apologize here, it's hard to read, so if you want to refer to the handout, that might be a little bit easier. But what it really proposes is a large amount of open space and flexible spaces that can be utilized for programming. The first phase will focus on the western deck, as well as improvements to the front entry plaza, where we do propose to have a nature and visitor center. The western deck will have a bike skills park. There will be a performance space that would have a band shell that could be assembled and dismantled, and that area could be used, again, for programming like yoga, tai chi, or large-scale community events. And then, there will be opportunities for nature play, a scenic overlook at the high point of the site. And then, in the eastern deck, we're proposing a dog park, and then the southern deck will remain largely passive open spaces. And I think it's important to point out that, again, this is 142 acres, so what you're seeing here is on par with the size of the Los Angeles County Zoo. So, this is kind of deceiving. It looks smaller than it actually is. And this is an aerial rendering that highlights kind of what the project will look like or what the park will look like in the future. And again, it's really just large swaths of open spaces, and you can, I think, really appreciate the beautiful mountain backdrop and the view of the San Gabriel National Monument. So, some of the proposed park features would be habitat enhancement, since there are a lot of biological resources that need to be protected here, scenic overlook, miles of multi-use trails, running loops. Fitness is definitely a key component of the site, slides that are built into the slopes that really take advantage of the topography, nature play elements that are more of like loose parts versus the playground features that you typically see at parks. We have stair climbs that are proposed, since there is a significant amount of elevation gain to the site. From the base of the landfill to the western deck, there's a 920-foot elevation gain, and in one of our future phases, we do propose a stair climb in that area. One of the more interesting features that also takes advantage of the topography would be zip lining. But again, I think what you could see is a lot of, a variety of different recreational opportunities and programming for the community to enjoy. So, now, I'm just going to walk you through some of our renderings that depict what the park could look like in the future. This is the park entry plaza now. It's really just an administrative building for the sanitation district, and this is what it'll look like in the future. We think it's really important that we have a, you know, a strong entry plaza as people arrive to the site, to really orient them to what, you know, is available within the park and also what areas are not available. There's going to be a significant amount of the site that is not open to the public, because the sanitation district has facilities that really shouldn't be tampered with. So, this is a space that we would share with the sanitation district, again, because they need to maintain operations for quite some time. And this is the stair climb that I mentioned. We call this aerial area of the site the arboretum, because it's very lushly landscaped, and in the future, it could look like this. Again, that would be a 920-foot elevation gain to the western deck, so that's going to be for the real avid fitness people. And then, this is the area between the western and eastern deck. This is, I think, my favorite rendering, but, you know, a lot of trails. You can see here, there's a stair climb that would connect the western and eastern deck, and in the background, the performance or community festival area for the art that would really be flexible. This is the scenic overlook in what, an area that we call the Nike Hill. It's the high point of the site. It's not a very large area, but it's definitely provides great scenic vistas. You can see all of the top decks, and then you can also see the entire San Gabriel Valley from that vantage point. So, we are proposing a beautiful scenic overlook in this area. And this is a view of the Nike Hill from the western deck. We would have an ADA accessible switchback trail from the western deck up into the Nike Hill and the overlook. There's another stair climb proposed in that area. And then, up in the right-hand corner, I don't think I've mentioned this yet, but one of the more unique features that's proposed as part of this project is a trail lift or a gondola-like structure, and that would connect the base of the landfill or the front entry to this area. And it's really a design solution to promote accessibility. It would, you know, provide ADA access here, but it's also a design solution for the limited access points to our site. There's a single front entry off of Crossroads Parkway that would be used by park users, but also by the trucks that are entering to use the materials recycling facility that's on the landfill site and will remain operating. So, there's definitely a lot of complexity here that we're working with and around, and that's a feature that's proposed to help mitigate that. So, these are just a couple of other renderings of the eastern deck. Again, they're just, what's proposed is primarily passive open spaces that are activated in some areas with, you know, some elements like the stair climbs, the bike skills, but largely passive. And this is another view of the eastern deck with the beautiful mountain backdrop, and the trails that are onsite are, will be multi-use trails, which means biking, equestrian, and hiking. And we're fortunate that there is a regional trail that is really the backbone of the park that is already on the site, and that's the Shabarm Skyline Trail. So, this will connect into a regional trail system and provide greater connectivity through the region. And then, this is the eastern flare site. It's a decommissioned flare site. One of the interesting things we've found in kind of doing some research nationally and internationally is that there is a movement to kind of utilize these post-industrial spaces for public purposes. So, what's proposed here is like a tower or a flare climb, and then maybe like another sort of visitors or nature center, classrooms, things like that. It's pretty loosely defined for our master plan, because that's an element that is way down the line in terms of our overall project timeline. And then, this just kind of highlights the long-term nature of our project. Our, you know, first phase will occur within the next 10 years, five to 10 years, but then, really, the whole life of the project and to implement the entire vision of the master plan may not occur, you know, for 50 years or more, and that's because of the settlement that's taking place. So, we do think that there will be at least one or maybe more points in the future where, once things have settled and we're more aware of the constraints at that time, we might reevaluate what's possible at the site. And then, lastly, we're here tonight to, again, spread the word and try to gain support for the project. And four ways that your council can help support the plan would be to pass the city resolution or provide a letter of support for the project. We have an online petition at change.org, and I think that's referred to on the handout as well. We also have a hashtag #ParkForAll, where you can kind of stay tuned through social media. And then, similarly, inform your constituents by sharing this information on your city website. So, that's the end of my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Yes, Councilmember Cruz Baca.
I have a question. Do you know if there will be a fee that's going to be charged either per car or per truck or whatever, like they do over at Santa Fe Dam?
Well, yeah. It hasn't been decided. That will go through the Board of Supervisors, and generally, they're committed to provide the most affordable recreation. But I would say it would be likely that there would be a fee for parking. It would be consistent with our other regional parks, but we are looking at creative ways to provide access to the site. There is, just recently, actually Supervisor Hilda Solis supported a motion to have a new station for the Gold Line at Rio Hondo College, which is a neighbor of the park. So, we're also creating a transportation management plan as part of this project and looking at ways to really get people to the site, you know, besides taking their own personal vehicles. So, linking it with public transit, you know, is one of our key goals in the future and hopefully something that we can accomplish.
I would appreciate if you could look into, one of the big things is exercise, of course, especially for a lot of the seniors. And even though a lot of them love to walk, like Santa Fe Dam, the $10 a day for the parking or $65 for the year is a little steep for them. So, in order for them to continue exercising, if you would take that into consideration, some of them do need to take their vehicles onto the site or to the park in order to walk. So, I would really like for that to be some type of a consideration for seniors.
Absolutely. And I didn't even mention that.
Or for handicap, disabled people as well.
Another feature that is being proposed is a shuttle service. We know that we're not going to probably be able to accommodate all of our parking needs onsite, so we're looking at providing some key off-site parking locations that would be connected through a shuttle service. So, I think the goal would be for those two to not necessarily require any fee, you know, if you're willing to park a little further away and just take the shuttle, so that could take you to the base of the landfill or the future park site and front entry or all the way up to the top.
Thank you. Very nice.
I have a question, if I may.
Yes.
You said you have allocated $30 million in the project. The life of the project stands to be 75 years, correct? So, is the $30 million per phase or is the 30 million going to be spread out over the sitting five years? I'm just wondering if, you know, you're going to start a project, then you're going to run out of money, and then something's going to be left undone. Can you educate me on how you plan to spend the money?
Yeah. I think for our master planning process, that question kind of came up early on. We had a choice whether we wanted to let the $35 million budget dictate kind of what was proposed as part of the plan and kind of scale it down accordingly, or kind of let the community vision inform the plan. So, we did the latter, and the $30 million is specifically for the first phase of construction, and the county will need, you know, for the future phases, the county will need to look at allocating funding for those. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else have any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Well, Mayor, I guess she's here to ask that we.
Yes, absolutely.
In support of.
in support of the project have a resolution, so I would be in favor of it. So I'd like to make a motion to also to write the resolution. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Looking forward. Thank you very much. All right, next presentation is the presentation of a proclamation recognizing April 29th, 2016 as National Arbor Day. Is there someone? Yes. Motion, second, any objections? See none, so move. Thank you. Are there any, anyone here to pick up the proclamation for Arbor Day? Manny Carrillo? Oh, that's right. Okay. All right, I'll just go and read it out for a quick. Okay, Arbor Day, April 29th, 2016. In 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed in Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for plants of trees. And the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature clean in the air, produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife. And trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. Trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and benefit our community. The trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. So on behalf of the City Ballpark, we present the proclamation to Manny Carrillo, I believe.
Mayor, can I say a few words? Well, first of all, yeah, I want to thank Manny Carrillo for taking on this project. I know it's been a while that the council and unity has been pushing for more trees and open space, but also want to remind the community that we have our fair this weekend as well as environmental fair. So that we're doing it together from, what is it, 10-21, correct, at Morgan Park? So anyone welcome to, to come and join us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Manny. You want to come up for it? Take our picture. Who's going to take the picture for him? Because normally he takes the pictures. All right. I figured you'd take that one as well. Good, Manny. Come on, Ricardo, you guys.
Go on, Maria.
That's the runaway camera.
Yeah, yes. It'll take several, so. Good enough? Are you filming? Okay, I'll get a hold of Manny. All right, let me get the next one down. Hold on, what's going on here? There goes. Yeah. All right, so the next one that we have is the Office of Office for Appointed Planning Commissioners, Mario Marcel, Jr., David Muse, Edwin Borkas, and Kevin Rooney. So let's have these newly appointed commissioners to come up at this point.
Mario.
Here we go. How's your street? Everything good?
Looking sharp.
Congratulations.
You look very nice.
Old school week, isn't it? It's homecoming.
Happy birthday, brother. Oh, yeah, make sure you got my name. Let's have everyone stand up right here. Kevin, you're going to have to come in there since there's a pause.
You want me to get in the back?
If you want to stay here, you want to go to the other side.
You know what? No, 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 let's, let's.
Let me move this chair.
Want to go by sides?
Let's have, let's have, no, stand right here, you guys. Face me.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, get in the middle.
He has to swear in the middle.
Get him on the square in the middle. Go back.
No, no, you gotta.
You guys, right here in the middle. Right here, right here. He's up there. Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to ask all the newly appointed commissioners to raise up their, raise. At the end, just, just wait, just say, "I do," okay? So, so at this one, I solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of California, of enemy, foreign, and domestic, that I will bear truth and allegiance to the Constitution of California. I take this up. Of any that I will well and faithfully charge the duties on which I am allowed to enter. I do. Congratulations. We're going to have this.
I see your hand. I'll shake your hand.
Mario.
You want to come on up?
Take a picture of me.
Hey, can you run here?
Take a picture when you sign.
Get a picture with your dad. Get a picture with your dad.
So wait a minute, will you sign?
You want to hold it?
That little one. There's a baby.
Yeah, she's seven months.
Where is she?
All right, let's get some with the commissioners, just with the commissioners. Let's get with the commissioners.
How's your mom?
Mario, let's get her on here. What's your certificate?
Oh, with the commissioner's.
All right, you guys, well picked. One, two, hold it.
You're so used to these photos that shit.
Are we, you know, sometimes, no, I'm asking you, sometimes I see the shirt and like, I'm like, you know, like, you know, tired.
Put it in your office.
Because I didn't get one the last time.
Put it in your office. Short to Father Matt.
This is your son, right?
Yep. Yeah, this is my daughter Samantha.
Hi, Maria.
Okay, the next presentation. All right, the next presentation is introduction looks Escobar Matute, Regional Administrator for the East Region Ballpark Library, new manager Christina Larios. So can we have, how are you? Yes. Yes, Rafael sure did. Why don't you come up here? We're going to get pictures. Let's do it from up here. Christina.
We'll introduce that.
Yes, I knew that. All right, we're going to, they're going to introduce us to our new librarian for the Ballpark, LA County Ballpark Library. Thanks, Mike. How are you?
Pleasure.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Nice to meet you. Thank you. Nice to meet you. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, let's step up to the mic.
Sure. Well, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Christina Larios. She's coming to you from East LA. And they say that good things take a long time. Well, the wait was worth it. Christina.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm very happy to be here in this community. I'm from the neighboring city Covina, so I'm familiar with the area. I look forward to starting programs, joint programs with our city. Thank you, and I look forward to seeing you at the library.
Thank you. So, well, we're looking forward to our concerts, though. We'll be introducing you to the whole community as well. Thank you very much for everything. Get our picture here with you. Come on, let's get him in here. Oh, thank you very much. Christina, looking forward.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nice meeting you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, the next presentation that we have, presentation of certificate in recognition to Michaela Ballpark High School Junior for her achievement at the state and national level of women's wrestling. Is she here? Oh, let's bring her up here. All right.
She has her family here, I believe, her parents, right? I'd like to invite her parents to come up and join us as well. Yes.
Let's bring them up here. Okay, so Michaela I Nolasco Loza. So come on up here. How are you? Congratulations.
And we also have Coach Eric come on up.
Okay, we have the family.
Coach Eric.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so. Coach, what's your first name?
Eric.
Eric. All right, this certificate reads, "Michaela." The city council graduates, congratulates you for a successful season and commends you for your hard work and dedication. Congratulations for qualifying, complete, compete at the national level, and for placing second in the state CIF championship tournament. Thank you for the favorable recognition you bring to your local school and our community. And she's also a student at Ballpark High School. So what we're going to do is place your name on the marquee tomorrow to let all the students know. Then we're going to place you in the city newsletter so all the 75,000 residents will know, okay? So coming up, Anne, Anne, what grade are you in?
I'm a junior.
You're a junior?
Yes.
We're going to recognize you at the concerts or all 2,000 concert goals we'll see you as well, okay? All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd just like to thank everybody who supported me, Veronica Lopez, Coach Eric. Thank you for the great season, and my family.
Thank you. Let's have the coach. Coach, come and say some words. Come on, Eric, let's hit it, brother.
There's nothing really I can say much, other than her dedication and her hard work speaks for all her accomplishments on all the achievements that she's done within this year and the year prior. I'm excited for her year coming up because I expect her to do great things.
All right, thank you, Eric. Let's get our picture here. Now, what's your name? Are you a wrestler, too? Oh, well, hold on, Ricardo just got here. Come on, Ricardo. All righty. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Oh, one more? Okay. All right, thank you very much. Pleasure.
Mayor, I would like to say I'm really proud of all the students here at Ballpark, but especially my alma mater, which is Ballpark High School. And we also need to recognize at the next council meeting, if you please, Cesar Arévalo, who recently, a child that came to him from El Salvador with his parents, and he has gotten 11 offers to go to colleges. He was all over the news. I'm sure that everyone saw him. But I give a big round of applause to Cesar Arévalo as well for making Ballpark proud.
Yeah, no, thank you for bringing that up. He called me yesterday, and, and he is currently out in Harvard, visiting Harvard, and I'd be Yale. He'll be here Saturday for the big car fundraiser that he and several other students have coordinated at Ballpark High School. Then he's headed towards Yale after that. So I asked him, well, which college, Ivy League, have you, have you made up your mind? He says, "Not yet," but it's amazing because this kid's got a career of a lifetime, and I want to congratulate him. An immigrant individual whose also siblings have gone on to higher education as well. So looking forward to recognizing them and recognizing the familia as well. All right, thank you very much. So at this, who? Oh, okay, I see. All righty.
How about a song, everybody?
All righty, before I open up the public communication announcement, this is announced as required by government code, section 54952.3. Members of the city council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the city council this evening. And each council member is paid an additional stipend of $30 for attending the housing authority, meaning, and $50 for attending the finance authority meeting, which we are opening concurrent. All right, so at this point, I will open up the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak, you have approximately three minutes. Thank you. Good evening. Hey, Al Contreras.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Alfonso Contreras, resident of Ballin Park for approximately 50 years, and also a graduate, like some of the people up there, from Ballin Park High School. But one of the questions I'm seeing, or what I'm just noticed today, I have attended meetings, obviously, here, Almani, Irwindale, Dori, and West Covina. But I looked around this room today, and maybe I know, and I'm hoping to get an answer, City of Azusa, after all the people speak, either the, their city manager or city attorney or the mayor themselves answered the questions after all the public spoken. I hope we can start looking into that direction, that we can get answers, whether it's the agenda. Then obviously, you know that the council has to take some type of action and respond at a later day in time, because it's not agendaized. But I looked around, and I see seven police officers. One of the council meetings that I attend have seven police officers guarding. Is there something that I don't know, that public doesn't know, or is going on that maybe we need an answer? Most of the cities that I attend have pretty much a chief of police or someone representing him, and it's only one officer. I do not know if it's additional cost to the city, but never, unless there's a super special event or some super special guest that needs additional security. But I'm asking the council, I'm asking the mayor, and I'm asking our community, are seven police officers, front officers all the way to the chief, are those necessary in our community? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mel.
Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Honorable mayor and city council members, you may recognize me, but if you don't, my name is Jacob Dunn. I'm the executive director of So Eat and Organics, and I'm a local resident in this area. I prepared something. I'm gonna read it to you tonight, okay? In our last meeting together, a few months back, I urged the city council not to pass the ordinance prohibiting medical marijuana distribution and cultivation. I understand you felt rushed, and marijuana policy is neither a quick nor easy decision to make. But while I can go on and tell you all the reasons why I believe the city's decision was short-sighted, tonight I am here to discuss something that is extremely serious: epilepsy. Did you know that 1 in 10 Americans will experience seizures during his or her lifetime? Every three minutes, someone is diagnosed with epilepsy. Children are particularly affected because seizures are detrimental to their fragile developing brains. In order to counteract these seizures, sometimes number them in the hundreds per day, epileptic children are often put on an extremely dangerous cocktail of addictive opiate-based anticonvulsants. This cocktail of prescriptions often renders the children virtually brain-dead and turns them into vegetables. Oftentimes, the array of anticonvulsants leads to an overdose, and these children actually have to be hospitalized so they don't die. This is a major problem. So now, let me tell you some good news. For over 10 years, the state of Israel has been conducting double-blind clinical trials on CBD. It's called cannabidiol. It's one of the main ingredients of medical marijuana, or some strains of medical marijuana. Also, you may be familiar with THC, the stuff of marijuana that gets you high, where cannabidiol does not get the user high at all and has no psychoactive effect whatsoever. These Israeli clinical findings have recently found support by GW Pharmaceuticals on an experimental epilepsy drug called Epidiox, and they found that this medication is reducing seizures in these children up to 40%. Some people using CBD are reporting 90% reduction in seizures. Recently, the FDA recently recommended to the Drug Enforcement Administration regarding scheduling cannabis under federal law, and it may actually have to do with these findings coming out regarding cannabidiol. Nevertheless, with all of this in mind, I wanted to tell you about an exciting opportunity. My organization is affiliated with a group who is working closely with the leading pediatric epilepsy specialist named Sean Hussein at UCLA. They are one year into a two-year program involving a number of children who are being administered high doses of CBD oil on a daily basis. We are looking at Ballin Park to be on the cutting edge of a breakthrough in scientific research and medicine. Cannabis especially varieties with high CBD and low THC is being recognized more and more as a viable alternative to the over-prescribed narcotic drugs that are plaguing our society and local cities.
Your three minutes are up.
May I continue?
Unfortunately, three minutes are up.
I don't. Just one request, if you could please respond to my comments at the end of this session. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I hate to interrupt public hearing.
That's fine.
We did forget one presentation, which was supposed to have been for Louise Duran, who got Woman of the Year by Assemblymember Roger Hernandez.
Oh, she did show up.
No, her son is here.
Yeah, I actually called Jeremiah, because he stepped out, and I was gonna let the mayor know that he came back. So, yeah, he's here on behalf of Louise to accept his certificate.
Why don't we finish up the public communication? Yeah, no, and definitely, definitely, come up here, Mr. Carr. That's fine.
Good evening, Ken Woods. First, I'd like to apologize for my actions last council meeting. I was loud and boisterous. But can you blame me? You know, you three guys acted like children in a schoolyard fighting. You know, I was a member of the water board for a short period of time, and I had the privilege of attending over 100 meetings. There were city council meetings and board meetings. Not, and there were some real heated discussions in those meetings. Not one time, not one time, did any elected official or official badmouth, call people liars, all the nasty things you guys said. You may not be ashamed of yourself, but I am ashamed of you.
Move along with public communication. Hey, Thomas.
Thomas Carey. Well, maybe the reason that there's so much police here is because of those restraining orders people keep filing on people. You know, it's rather unnecessary. You don't, you don't need to file restraining orders to try and keep people quiet. With me, it was the code enforcement 10 years ago. Tried to silence me then. You saw what that, what that got you. That got me to come to every meeting and speak every chance I got. So that type of thing didn't work with me. Not gonna work with other people, either. I understand you gave yourselves a pay raise the last time, the last meeting or the meeting before. $42,000 a year, I guess, wasn't enough. Irwindale, or, yeah, Irwindale, they get $23,000. Azusa, $31,000. And South Almani, $24,000. I don't know, maybe you need more money because of that litigation that's forthcoming. False restraining orders and getting somebody to sign off on something like that. You know, the one that signed off on that could end up, find himself disbarred. And anybody that knew about it, that's an attorney, could also find themselves disbarred. That's, that's a serious thing. People have a right to attend conferences and make sure that you go there and that you stay there for the full time. This isn't Nazi Germany or North Korea or someplace like that. This is America. You have a right to go wherever. Private investigators, people that investigate workers comp and disability fraud and things like that, they follow people all over the damn place. That's not stalking that's investigating, to make sure that the person that is claiming something is actually disabled or whatever the case is. By filing restraining orders and using this poor people's taxpayer money to defend off lawsuits, you're making the people poorer. You say you care about them. Well, you couldn't prove that by me. Defending off litigation, making the attorneys, they're the only ones that make out and things like that. So, if you're gonna keep going down that road, these people here, they're, and like that Murph thing, I thought that was dead 10 years ago, but it's coming. It's gonna happen. You can't stop it. Nobody can. Athens has billions of dollars. It's gonna be built. It's just the way it is. So you need to basically stop threatening people with code enforcement and other things and restraining orders, trying to silence critics, because it's not gonna happen. People have a right to speak against you. I could say more choice words. It's nearly slipped out a couple of times, but I don't do those things.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Lozano, council members. My name is Rose Hernandez. I'm sure you probably remember me. I'm the treasurer for the Ballin Park High School Band Booster Club. I'm here to cordially invite each and every one of you personally to our band banquet, which will be next Friday, April 29th, at the Julian McNeil Senior Center at 7:00 PM. And I would also like to invite you to our annual taco night, which is May 7th, Saturday, at Ballin Park High School Stadium. I'm sure that most of you received your invitations via email. If you didn't, you can always look at our website at www.bphsbravestband.com. Okay, thank you.
Greg Tuttle, business owner. I want to announce that on Monday, I filed a lawsuit against Manny Lozano, Monica Garcia, and Ricardo Pacheco. My John Rios is here to serve the subpoenas. They're laying on here. You have been served all three, and we're gonna take pictures of it. And this is not one that you get paid for. You're the defendant. So educate your city attorney. You don't get witnesses' fee when you're being sued, okay? So we made it very clear to you. So you guys can do whatever you want. You've been served. Now then, the, we'll go on to the wage increase. You slipped that through with all the other stuff in there. What they did was they gave themselves another $100 to drive around town and gas allowance. They gave them another $25 to do phone allowance, which they don't need. Nobody tells anything about the iPads that you guys have with internet service. Ricardo Pacheco and Monica Garcia get internet service for free out of their houses. And Ricardo runs his business, which is a so-called solar deal, out of his business using the internet service. We need to stop this abuse of power and misuse of funds. And also, you got $100 onto your CAFERS, which you shouldn't even be getting paid. Most of city councils don't get paid for their health insurance. You don't take it, you don't get the extra money. But not you people. You're greedy. You're not here for the people. Now then, the campaign manager deal. I've never signed up and never been a campaign manager, so you guys can blow smoke. There's never been a form that you'll find that I'm a campaign manager. Do I put signs up? Yes. Do I help other people? Yes. I've never been a campaign manager. Now, as far as the farmer's market, typical example of Pacheco, you and Monica, or, I'm sorry, Lozano and Garcia, a flop. You people failed miserably. What they should have had out there instead of ponies is donkeys for you three to ride on, so you could see how bad that farmer's market was. But great job, guys. And then with the... With your campaign, well, oh, God, okay. Also, just to let everybody know what I, my status really is in this community, I'm a political activist. I'm not a campaign manager, never have been, never will be. I'm not running for office. And yes, I did run against you. Was a joke, mayor. It was only a joke, but you keep playing it up like it was some big deal. I never put any money into it and made an effort to it. And did I stay at that house down there by you? Absolutely. Did you come by and see me? No, you never did, but you throw it out there. You call me a liar. You call all this stuff...
Mr. Tuttle. Need three minutes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, move along with public communication.
Hello, city council, residents of Ballin Park. You five people up here are supposed to work for us, all of us, 75, 80,000 people. You don't work for us. You ought to, all five of you, excuse for the two young ladies, the rest of you ought to be fired. Too bad Trump is running for president of the country, because I'd have brought him down here by now. He'd have fired all you three, boot you out the window like if you were nothing, like a big gush of wind. That's the way you guys, you three, would have went. You know, we pay a lot of taxes to the city of Ballin Park. All these people out here, including me and including you, I know, don't forget us. Listen, you're throwing our money away like it grows on trees. You walk out to the backyard, pick up a couple million dollars, put it in the funds, and say, we got a lot of money. Then the next audit you have, oops, we're in debt. What kind of audit do you guys do? Oh, I know. One time we're rich, next time we're broke. You're spending, every time we come down here, you're spending $100,000 or more buying this, buying that, and what do we have? A city that's gonna go broke. You know why? Because you're gonna pay more into your guys' pension plan than you're gonna pay to, people pay into it. But it's okay. We don't have to... Mayor, I'm talking. You guys got something to discuss, do it after I finish. I don't interrupt you. You don't interrupt us. How simple is that, mayor? Thank you. Thank you. Lawyer, you should be working for 80,000 people that live in this city. You are not doing that. You are completely not doing that. There's two people up in that council that might be working for us, but they have no choice, because you other three don't care. Mr. Pacheco, the mayor, Senora Garcia, you guys don't care a darn thing about this city. Think about it. The mayor, you're gonna try to raise taxes pretty soon. You know why? Because you spend too much of our, our money. You blow it like it comes on trees. Boy, think about it. It don't grow on trees. You're like the city of Los Angeles. Oh, raise their utilities, raise this, raise that. Just keep raising it till it's up there. We're, oh, I have a friend that losing his home. There's a lot of people that are losing their home. But keep raising the taxes.
Your three minutes are up.
Thank you very much.
Three minutes.
Okay, move along with public communication. Just lower the mic here.
Good evening, Danny Damian, business owner, resident. In reference to item number eight, award of contract for the Fourth of July fireworks show, we want to award the contract to Pyro Spectaculars Incorporated and authorized Parks and Recs Director Manny Carrillo to execute the contract, which will have a cost of $21,000 and will be funded by the Business Improvement Tax Fund. In addition to the $21,000, how much more is it going to cost us for staff, police, permits, entertainment, et cetera? What makes you think it is okay to pay for this out of the Business Improvement Tax Fund? I have a business on Ramona Boulevard, which is in the same center as King Taco, and at night, it is very dark out there. That location is downtown. Why don't you use the money from this fund to put in new lighting and maybe give that area a facelift? I'm not against the Fourth of July fireworks show, but it makes no sense paying for this out of the Business Improvement Tax Fund. Will you also be raising business license fees to help pay for this? What sense does it make to pay for a 20-minute fireworks show out of the Business Improvement Tax Fund? In which way is this benefiting the businesses in the area? In which way is this benefiting the businesses in the area? The problem is that you continue to waste money and don't do anything to increase the revenue. I have a suggestion that will save the city some money. Why don't the four consultants that you just hired pay five thousand each to sponsor the fireworks show? That will give you twenty thousand dollars. In other cities, sponsors pay for their fireworks shows. Now, moving on to the firing of Community Development Director Mark Castagnola. On February 17th, 2016, you Mayor Lozano and Council Members Garcia and Pacheco voted for the dismissal of the Community Development Director Mark Castagnola. And before you have, before you say that he was an at-will employee, I would like to know what justification you had to fire him. Many of the businesses have concerns and regards to Mark's firing. All of us had a good working relationship with him, and we want an explanation. It is not right for you three to mess with people's livelihood. When you start firing people because of your own political agenda, you have crossed the line and went too far. Our city employees deserve to be treated a lot better than that. This is not to mention the firing of twenty-one commissioners, also with no justification. You three, Mayor Lozano and Council Members Garcia and Pacheco are out of control and need to start doing what you were elected to do, and that is to move the city forward ethically and for the best interest of us all, the residents, employees, and business owners. And I would appreciate it if you can respond to some of our questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You wanna talk, Shannon? Don't start my clock. Already got violated the last time I was here. Mr. Lozano, you violated my rights last time. I gave the paperwork to them, right away, you got somebody else in here. I didn't even have forty-five seconds. I have three minutes. So, you violated me. Okay? One of the things you guys have to understand, and the people have to understand, compares. You're the ones that are making the money. You're the ones that, ooh, let's go to lunch, let's put something under the table. One of the things you guys have to understand, we are keeping our eyes on you. Mrs. Garcia, the last time you go after Cruz. Mr. Lozano, you went after Cruz two minutes ago. Mrs. Rubio had to stop you and tell you she wasn't the one that fired the commissioners. It was Mr. Pacheco. Get your facts together. Don't be a liar like you call us liars. We're not liars. Everything that we talk about, we get it through public communications and the paperwork, We're no stooges. I call stooges the people that, oh, I'm a commissioner, I'm gonna do this. They're not doing anything for us, okay? All the commissioners that you re-hired or hired today, they're puppets. That's why you hire them. That's why Mr. Woods, Joanne, what did, Mrs. Garcia says, "No, no, 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 we need a girl." What is Joanne? I hope she's a girl. Mr. Woods, resident of Baldwin Park for what, fifty years? You know, business owner, respectful. Everybody respects him in the community. So, you guys have to start using your head to help the community, because we are going after you guys. You know, we're not, you know, like I told you at the beginning, you guys started wrong, but you could put Mrs. Garcia as Mayor Pro, and it was Mrs. Susan Rubio, Karen, okay? Why? Ooh, Mayor, Mr. Pacheco, no, let's put her. So, those are the things that we are looking at, okay? But we're not finished with you guys. Thank you.
All right, move along with public communication.
Good evening, council. My name is Veronica Lopez. Um, I was just reading on the agenda, and I would like to know if you could please elaborate more on your item seven, consideration of banners for our military heroes. Uh, my question is, um, I know the, you posted that once the milit, uh, our hometown heroes come home, the flag is retired along with them. However, what about those hometown heroes that don't make it home? Is there a program where we keep the banner up in their memory as well as providing the family one as well? Just wanted to know, can you elaborate on that program as well? And if there's funding kept on reserve for maintenance of these flags? I know in the past, just driving through Baldwin Park, some of the banners have been fallen or torn for some reason. You know, we did, we do get wind, so I would like to know that as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, move along with public communication.
At the previous meeting, I expressed concern regarding the obvious and excessive amount of contracts this council has approved. Every single member who voted in favor of those contracts failed to address my concern. The contract with Cosmon intends to facilitate finding a new major retailer to bring to our city. How is it that this council can sign an ordinance to boycott a big chain market and then approve a contract that will facilitate negotiations to bring another one in? This issue was on the agenda when I spoke about it, one of the requirements for a resident to expect an answer. Why was my concern disregarded? As pathetic as it sounds, the mayor himself has gone as far as to block me from posting questions and concerns on his public figure social media page. By doing this, not only have you suppressed my voice, but you have deliberately held the truth from your supporters. Why is it that our representatives would rather run and hide rather than answer our questions? It has come to my attention that I am not the only one who has brought up the issue of poor lighting in our downtown area. I spoke with the residents, and they stated that the basketball courts at Morgan Park have been without lights for six months. They have continuously contacted the parks administration and have no response other than the budget will be looked into. How is it that a city that is recognized by Playful City USA and the Let's Move Program can allocate resources to fund unnecessary lawsuits but not to maintain our parks? What I'm asking of the council is not unrealistic. I am simply asking that you do what you were elected to do. I am asking that you answer the questions of the residents. It is more than reasonable to expect my representatives to be able to defend the decisions they make thoroughly and with detail. I can confidently state that any resident would agree. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Move along with public communication.
Jane McGuire, I'm a resident. We received a notice from the city of Irwindale about the Murph, and they're having a meeting next, uh, I believe it's a Wednesday, April 27th at 6:30. Now, if our city council really supports the citizens in fighting the Murph, I hope to see you join us at that meeting next week. Because the EIR has come through, and there are significant and unavoidable impacts to our neighborhood, because we live on the north end, way up in the north. Maybe we don't count as much as the rest of the residents, but, uh, air pollution, noise, traffic, and air pollutants. So, I really hope that if you really are sincere and you sincerely care about all your citizens, that you will show up in Irwindale next week. Thank you. And it would be helpful if you could post that somewhere, April 27th, 6:30, Irwindale City Hall, so, so the word can get out to more of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will address that at the end. Thank you very much. At this point, uh, anyone else wishing to speak? All right, this point, we'll now declare the public communication closed. I just want to address the item one, which is in reference to the, um, you know what, ma'am? Ma'am, excuse me, excuse me. Can someone?
McGuire.
Mrs. McGuire? McGuire, before, before you leave, I'll just, let me, you're number thirteen, so let me just say this. The city council adamantly opposes the Murph, and we did that several years, several years back. We will be present at that city council. We're not going to just stay idly by and allow a toxic recovery facility being built right here. It's definitely going to affect each and every one of us. We know that. Now, we've had, we've also had the air measured and the particles and so on and so forth. And of course, it's a twenty-two, over a twenty-two million dollar project, and the, the ultimate goal for the city of Irwindale, of course, because of necessity funds, they're looking at possibly bringing in about between three to four million dollars annually out of that. So, yes, we, we are on it. We oppose it. Uh, we do have a legal council that will be on that, uh, to be able to protect the city as well. So, want to know that, and we want to make sure that we get all the residents from the north section, because I remember the last time, we had hundreds that attended the actual city hall itself, and they had to move it over to one of their big auditoriums. So, just to let you know.
Well, I don't know if you're notified of these meetings or not.
Yes, yes, we are. And it's right, we also have it in the newsletter. It's in the newsletter.
Right, well.
To all the residents, it gets sent out.
I made copies of the notices we got, and I, one for each of you council members.
All righty. All right, thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
I do want to, I have had many conversations, Mrs. McGuire, with not only the residents on the north side of town, um, with church organizations, with some of the schools, and as well as some of the council members from the city of Irwindale in order to, to discuss this. It's a, it's a big concern for me, and I will assure you that I have made plans since I heard about this meeting to be there. And please come and, and speak your concerns. That is very important. It's not just the presence of the council or the mayor from the city of Baldwin Park, but for you to come and voice your concerns, because that has more of an impact on what decisions they will be making as well. And also, please, let your residents know, as the mayor said, it's in the now. I have put it out on the social media and had other students put it out on social media so that we can have a large crowd. And thank you very much for bringing it to our attention.
I've been to every meeting, and I've, and I've written all my letters every time there was a deadline. I, I, you know, we did it, but, you know, a lot of people are apathetic.
Well, but good for you, because a lot of people just look at it and throw it in the trash, and that's very unfortunate, and expect for someone else to do the work for them.
Well, just to let you know, the last time, we derailed the actual project itself, and that's why it's been years since it was, came back, because of the fact that we put some major pressure. And this time around, they're serious of bringing it in, because we don't have the redevelopment agencies no more, so they're looking at how do they enhance revenue, and that's it right there.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
They have lots of land.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd also like to say that years ago, when the city of Irwindale was first proposing the Murph, they did have a hearing. There were at least two hundred Baldwin Park residents that attended. I know that the majority of our council was there, and we also had hired an attorney to challenge the environmental impact report because of cumulative impacts that we were concerned about. And so, that's what really stalled the project. Um, so now, Irwindale has come back again with a new EIR, and we're, we'll be right back at it. So, just want to assure you, I grew up at Maine and Olive. My mom lives there, so, uh, north, you know, Baldwin Park is, is, is very important, uh, like the rest of our community, and so we want to make sure that it's protected.
We've been here forty-eight years, same house, forty-eight years. We're six houses down from Live Oak, so we're close, really, really close.
I just want to say, uh, that, uh, the city council's fought very hard to make sure that, the last time that the Murph came, we fought very hard. We had hired attorneys to, to study the, the impacts, and we all opposed it, and we oppose it today. We have it in our website. Uh, we have hired a environmental consultant and an attorney to help us on this issue and to make comments on the EIR. So, we'll be in force, and I'll be there to make sure that, you know, give our opinions about what we think of the Murph. And maybe they could move it down, you know, more in town someplace. They have, Irwindale has a lot of property. Maybe they could move just away from our, you know, from our site and have it maybe on the other side closer to maybe the heart of Irwindale. I don't know, but definitely. We're supportive of you, we're with you, and we'll all be there together that evening. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'll see you there.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, move it along. Also, the item about, that was brought up about the police officers that are here, just to let everyone know, they are not on overtime. Two, they are here, yes, there is a total of seven. There's an actual subject of importance to them, which is item number ten, that reads, "Conduct a public hearing to consider and introduce an ordinance of the city of Baldwin Park to set forth the implementation of developmental, developmental impact fees for law enforcement's facilities, vehicles, and equipment." So, that's the reason why they are here. There is an interest there, and that's their particular department. So, just to let everyone know. The gentleman that mentioned about the actual cannabis shop, just to let you know, the ordinance itself that we passed was a set that we, as an independent city, were not going to lose the possibility of, of having our own regulation versus the state coming down on us and, and proposing that, just to let you know. So, we have not, um, uh, decided at this point, but just to let you know that, hopefully that answers your question, so. Yep, okay, all righty. Thank you. All right, so, and then we'll have more information as we go on. Uh, all right, so.
One more quick comment. I know that individuals come and speak about misfunding of, of funds and that we don't spend our money properly to our community, but let me just talk to you about the, the street rehab projects that we have. Uh, this year, we've paved one of the twenty-nine residential street segments. So, a lot of our residents got new streets. We paved five major street segments, uh, throughout, throughout our city, including Ramona Boulevard and other major areas. We paved a total of about eight point seven five centerline miles of road. Upgraded one hundred and fifty wheelchair ramps to current ADA standards. So, that costs us, I don't know, Director, what did that cost us, like three point five million?
A, a little more than that, um, close, yeah, about four million dollars all total.
Okay, so we have four million dollars of your taxpayers' dollars that went out into the community, went out into the streets, and really, you know, there's a lot of rehab. So, if you go around Baldwin Park, you'll see a lot of the new streets, you know, how they got the, you know, newly paved, newly striped. Uh, along Baldwin Park High School, we fixed there. We also did the safe routes of school, which a lot of the schools got, uh, you know, paved streets and new ADA compliant sidewalks. For example, um, we have now high-visibility crosswalks. Dexter Street on Puente Avenue, we put a new rapid flash beacon signage and, uh, and bobouts. On Francis Guido Avenue and Remney Avenue, we have new rapid flash and beacon signage, uh, which were requested by a lot of the residents. On Francis Guido Avenue and Robin Hood, uh, which in your service to the new rapid flash and beacon signage and bobouts were, uh, were put out there. So, we're spending a lot of the taxpayers' dollars, a lot of your hard-earned money, goes back into the community, goes back into improving our streets, and, uh, you know, especially around where our students are. So, we're trying very hard to make sure that your dollars are spent very wisely. I know if, if you live in Baldwin Park and you drive around or walk around, you're gonna see a lot of the improvements on our streets and a lot of improvements that the city is making. So, I think it's important that if you live here and you drive around here and you work here, you'll see a lot of the great improvements that we're making here in this city. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Were some of those improvements done through grants, or is it just out of the general fund, or funds that come in through different measures?
We didn't use any general fund money for those improvements. Those, those improvements were done, uh, in large part through tax that comes to the city that's earmarked for street improvements. Uh, and also, we did receive some grant funding to pay for, for some of those improvements as well.
I want to thank, and the reason I wanted you to clarify that so that the people would understand that when it's earmarked, that means it can only be used for that, correct?
That's right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and thank you, Councilman Ricardo Pacheco.
Mayor.
Yes.
Yes, I also wanted to point out the Walnut Creek Nature Park improvements, which are on the agenda tonight. And, uh, those are funds that we were able to obtain from outside agencies, and so that's yet one more project that I think we're very proud of. But, you know, before we move on, I wanted to address some of the comments about the temporary restraining order, and there are some ideas and some opinions out there that, you know, this is very frivolous activity and that it's come out of nowhere. I've been on the council now. I was elect, first elected to the city council in 2007, and I have, uh, you know, consistently been attacked by a certain individual. Um, and, you know, for many years, we just kind of took the high road, but more recently, that behavior escalated. And I want to read off, uh, another temporary restraining order that was brought about by Sheila Ann Tuttle, who is the then-wife of Greg Sebastian Tuttle. And in this declaration, she stated, "I, Sheila Ann Tuttle, hereby state and declare under penalty of perjury, the following is true and correct." She goes on to say, "I am seeking this order of an ex parte application based on the fact the respondent, who is Greg Tuttle, has caused physical harm to our daughter and is..." and is mentally abusing both of us to the point we are in fear of our lives." And this declaration goes on for several pages. So, I just want to again, you know, ask all of you, you know, if that would be okay, you know, in your family? If you were, if you had a daughter, a sister, a mother, you know, any family that was being attacked by an individual who clearly has had a pattern of verbal and, you know, other types of abuse. So, these are not frivolous, and sometimes it takes two sides of the story. So, I just wanted to put my side out there, because I would never go out and, you know, I've often said, my, both of my grandfathers served in World War II, I'm very proud of that. I've had families serve for this country. I'm very, you know, I feel very privileged that we have a democratic process. And I have no problem with individuals sharing a different opinion than mine and engaging in conversation. I actually encourage it. But, you know, some of these concerns are not frivolous, and there have been patterns over the years. And I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Just want to also finish up, address Mr. Luna mentioned about taxes, and I've said this over and over. No city can do that. There's a state law that mandates that any particular type of tax has to go out to the voter. So, that, I'll just settle on that particular area. But the Fourth of July, Fourth of July, we had not had that proposed, I believe it's over four years due to the recession, so the major cutbacks that we did. Its introduction, which was last year, served over five thousand people. And yes, it is legal for us to utilize the funds out of the business improvement. That is permitted per the actual ordinance of the business tax. And no, it's not going to go up. There's no, there's no reason for the city to increase that particular fee. So, just want to, it's a good, it was a good question, but I just want to make sure that that is answered thoroughly. And again, Fourth of July, and you indicated you're not against it, but it's something that we definitely missed for a lot of the residents in Baldwin Park. So, just want to clarify that particular area. Also, making reference to one of the employees that worked here one time, that is confidential and privileged information for the actual employee that was employed by us at one particular time. So, just want to state that as well. Veronica, you mentioned about the banners. Yes, we're going to increase, we're going to refund it. Some of the banners are in bad shape, and we are planning on making sure that they're all back up. We do have a monument at the park itself that makes reference to three of the actual soldiers that were killed in combat. But we're going to make sure that theirs are back up here for many years, applying in front of city hall, because that's what we've had in the past. So, just want to make that very clear. Now, the gentleman that came up here about the various types of contracts, yes, these are decisions that you may disagree, and that's what it's about, agree to disagree. But those contracts are being voted, maybe not by the vast majority of the city council, or because we all have different decisions. But I could tell you very clearly, every decision that's been made by this city council here has been above board and will always continue. I mean, we pulled out of the recession by making very tough decisions that, of course, a lot of people were not happy. But thank goodness that we made those decisions, because right now, we could look at our reserve fund, which is above five million dollars, and we'll continue to have funds that are allowing us to move the city forward. I was mentioning, a good portion are grants for the various streets and the parks and what have you. And we're going to continue pushing in that area. We're not as affluent as the communities that are neighbors, but the goal is for us to be able to reach that particular area sometime in the future, of course. But other than that, I just will report that our finances are there for you to review. This city has never been investigated by any county, state, or federal level agency. And it's unfortunate, some will refer us to other cities, but the fact is that the city has a lot of pride, and the residents here are all doing good, and, but we could do even much better, and we're moving in that direction. So, just want to let you know in that particular area.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Cruz.
I want to make a correction. The young man said that, and I don't know if it was a mistake or he read it wrong, but he said that we had all voted for the consultant agreements, and I, that is a correction. I did not vote for the consultant agreements. And I did on one of the consultants, I was the only one that voted no. And the reason that I did was because I still will stand behind that I do think that there is some frivolous money being spent on consultants that are repeating themselves and doing the same thing over and over. I'm being, I know that I will be, that there will be council members that will disagree with me, but that is my personal feeling, not only from being a lifetime resident here in Baldwin Park, but also because I have taken a good look at some of these contracts and have seen that they are overlapping each other and repeating over and over. And that was why my decision was no on the votes. Thank you.
Right.
Mayor, I would also like to clarify that I did not vote on all the contracts as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, thank you. Thank you very much. Alright, so at this point, before we go to consent calendars, we're going to bring up Luis Duranz, Forty-Eighth District, Woman of the Year. She's not here, am I correct?
Mayor, can I just take a minute to apologize? I was looking, because she's a friend of mine, and I didn't see her in the audience. So, I told the mayor, "Oh, you know what, my friend's not here, and I didn't realize the son was here." So, I apologize, Cruz. So, he left, and I called him, "Come back," I just saw him stepping out. So, my apologies to your mom for not.
Is she able to make it the next city council meeting? Oh.
And excuse me, she did contact me earlier today, and so did your sister. And they let me know that she was not feeling well, and that they would be sending someone on her behalf to collect the recognition. And so, that's why I, when I saw him in the audience, I said, "We forgot him."
I know. Come on up.
Jeremiah, Jeremiah.
Jeremiah. I know. Yeah, Jeremiah, let's do this, let's do this, because your mom is special to the community, actually, your entire family. Let's set it for next month. There's the first, we'll give you the dates, and let's set it up, because we definitely have to have her here. It'd be nice to be able to bring her and showcase her. And it's a person who obviously has dealt with cancer, and I know that she will persevere. So, why don't we do that, okay?
Mayor, I would actually.
May fourth, let's say May fourth is the first meeting, then the second, the third one will be what, May eighteenth? So, one of those two. So, she's good on the fourth, let's do it.
I was just going to suggest, because I know she's going through so many struggles medically, that maybe you notify us when that would be a good time, and then we could proceed from there.
They don't know.
Okay. Keep us posted.
Send her our best, please.
But I just want to recognize her, because I, she's my hero, but.
I want to personally thank you for nominating my mother, knowing that she's a.
She is, and she's a three-time cancer survivor.
That's correct.
She's been a bus driver with the Baldwin Park Unified School District for years and years. I, Little League is always a smile on her face. Her grandchildren and her family are her life. I have known Louise probably most of my life, so I just want to say, very much deserved, very, very much deserved.
Alright, thank you very much, appreciate that. Okay, so at this point, we're going to go into the consent calendars, items one through eight. Councilmembers wishing to pull any items out?
Pages seven and eight.
Seven and eight?
Yes.
Okay.
Move approval of all items except for.
Except for eight?
Seven and eight, okay.
Except for seven and eight.
Okay, alright. The second, it was second by Vice Mayor Monica Garcia, any objections? Seeing none, so move. Item number seven, which is a consideration of extension of hometown heroes military banners recognition program.
Well, I know that, Mayor, you touched on a little bit of what Veronica was asking, but, you know, great opportunity to have Manny Carrillo explain the process, how they apply for it, because I'm sure there's a lot of new heroes, and maybe the families would like to know how to apply, and how, you know, just who to notify. Can you just give us a little bit of a synopsis of how that works, so everyone knows?
Sure, I'd be happy to. In order to apply for the hometown hero program, you would need to call city hall and talk to the city council secretary, her name is Rosa Cabalero. And her number is, just for the folks listening at home, nine six zero four zero one one. Once again, nine six zero four zero one one, extension one one two. And she is the executive secretary, and she will go ahead and take all the information. And then after that, the process will commence to repost the banner, or to put up a banner.
Can you also please clarify the qualifications? Do they have to be residents or not? Do they have to be family members of our residents? Can you clarify that point for the audience?
Sure. The program is for those serving in the Middle East conflict. And it is for any male or female or anyone in the military. And you also need to be a Baldwin Park resident.
Thank you so much, and I hope that answers your question, Veronica.
I have a question as well.
So, I guess we can.
No, we're putting everyone up there, even if they're not going overseas.
Yeah, if I could clarify, the original program was approved during the height of the conflict. However, we are still accepting applications for service members that are on active duty.
Okay.
And any branch of the military, correct?
Yes, any branch.
That's correct.
Absolutely.
I have a question for, that I had brought up about a year ago or so. And it was in regards to the American flags that would go up around Memorial Day, and then be taken down after the Fourth of July. I would still like to see that, if we need to bring in sponsors, or we need to bring in someone that could help us with that, because I know other cities do that. And along with the banners that recognize our, but also to recognize all the young men and women that have served in the different wars, that either were or are still residents of Baldwin Park. I think that would be really nice to commemorate them. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second, any objections, seeing none, so move. Alright, item eight, which is the award of contracts for Fourth of July. Project show to, whose talent is this, Manny Carrillo? Or do we have any questions? If not, oh, Susan, yeah, question, sorry about that.
You know, of course, we're all very supportive of city programs and making sure that our families have a place to attend. I just want to not dismiss the suggestion, because I think it's a great suggestion. If we can, Manny, and I know you're great, and that's why I'm pointing it out, you're great at getting funding. Like I said, I don't want to dismiss the suggestion, and we can look for sponsors for the Fourth of July and make sure that, you know, we explore all options before we dig into the business improvement tax. Thank you.
And with that, I'll make the motion to approve, thank you.
I'll second, any objections, seeing none, so move. Alright, at this point, we're going to go to the public hearing. Item ten, which is to conduct a public hearing to consider and introduce an ordinance of the city of Baldwin Park to set forth the implementation of developmental impact fees for law enforcement, facilities, vehicles, and equipment. So, at this point, I'm going to, who's opening up the public, I'm going to, who is it?
I can give a staff report. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. During the budget last year, this council did request that staff look into revenue ideas. One of the items brought up by staff was a public safety development impact fee. The city council approved doing the study at the end of last year. The study is completed, it is before you tonight. The development impact fee is a one-time fee. It is only paid on brand-new construction. An example the city already has is the park impact fee, or we call it the Quimby fee. And that is a fee that's paid by developers to help contribute to either expanding or improving our existing parks within the city. So, this would be very similar. If adopted, it would pay for the future police services that are related to the impacts that each new development causes to the city. And these fees are restricted funds. They can only be used for equipment, facilities expansion, and vehicles that are necessary due to the development. The funds cannot be used for salaries or any other operational uses. If the fee is not adopted, the city would continue to pay for these types of things generally from our general fund budget. The fees are shown on chart page three of your staff report, and they vary according to the use. But for example, the one-time fee for a new single-family house would be seven hundred and forty dollars for that house, and that, again, that is a one-time fee. The council could approve if you wished to lower the fees, but you cannot approve any fees that are higher, because the fees have to be justified in the attached report. Just also wanted to note out, note that the building industry did send in a letter with some ideas, that was put before you tonight. And also, just to note that there are no automatic increases in the fees. So, if the city wanted to increase the fees after, say, for in five years because of inflation, then that would come back to you at that time. The city staff recommends adoption of the public safety development fee. Also, our consultant, Scott Thorpe, from Revenue and Cost Specialist is here if you have any detailed questions.
Okay, let me open up to the, actually, let's hand come up here, could you go ahead and just cover some of this?
He's, I'm not sure if he has any report prepared. He was asked to be here in case you have any specific questions, or detailed questions, or maybe some questions that the public comes up.
Okay, then let's, alright, then let's, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearings. So, anyone wishing to come up to talk on this specific, and I will take those that oppose. So, here comes Al Contreras.
I'm not in opposition, nor am I in favor. I just want to get educated. My question, there was always fees for, as you mentioned, Shannon, for constructing a house. Where did this money go in the past? Is this a new fee that's all of a sudden is going to be used for the police department? Or did it, in the past, did it go to the general fund? I don't have nothing against the police department, but are some of those funds that were used somehow, somewhere else, are they going to lose those funds? Or now, you're taking a different avenue and using the majority of the funds for the police department, and now utilize some of the funds for other city involvement, you know, maybe your regular employees or other benefits that can benefit everyone else? So, again, I'm not opposing it, or whatever, but I'm just thinking, how did it work before? And why is it now that it's only going to benefit the police department? Or would it be split in between like it was before? Thank you very much.
Okay, go ahead, Shannon, that's fine.
Thank you, Mayor, if I could answer that question. Yes, the city does collect other fees, and these are generally fees for a service. So, when you apply for a permit, you will pay fees to the planning department, and that covers processing your application. You would pay fees for your building permit, which covers the inspections that are done on the construction. So, those fees, according to state law, those can only cover the work that the city is doing. So, the city cannot charge more than it costs to do the plan check and to process the applications. So, and in theory, those fees would only, building permit fees only go to the building department. Planning fees only enough to cover the planning department. We're actually in the process of doing another study right now on all of those fees to make sure that we are recouping our costs. If we're not, they maybe need to be a little bit higher, or if they're maybe too high, then they would need to be lowered. And we're doing that study right now to make sure those fees are up to date, and that we're only recouping our costs as required by state law.
Alright, so at this point, this is, so, your polls?
Yeah, we're mutual. My name is DeAndre Valencia, I represent the Building Industry Association of Southern California. We represent about eleven hundred member companies who do, who's in the business of building homes within Southern California. We're not opposed to the idea of the fee. We understand that new construction needs to pay its fair share. If I was sitting in your seats right now, I would honestly do the same thing when it comes to police. I would like to continue to see the level of service taken into the future for the city. But we do have our concerns about it. And we ask you to take into consideration, right now, the city, the county of Los Angeles is currently in a housing and homeless crisis. Currently, right now, any given day, fifty-six thousand homeless individuals are roaming the streets within the county. And currently, the city needs to build, or not, sorry, the county needs to build a hundred and eighty thousand housing units by the year 2021 to meet the projected demand. Even in more specific, Baldwin Park currently has a short-term housing deficit of about thirteen hundred houses that need to be built within the year of 2021. Looking at past year, there was about fifty-six houses that were developed last year, and the year prior, only eighteen. And these two years, last two years, have been considered a housing boom in California. So, right now isn't the time to increase fees on the developer, because ultimately, that trickles down to the consumer, which is the home buyer. So, we ask you to take this into consideration, and ask the direct staff to go ahead and relook at the, and reevaluate the fee, and look at surrounding cities and their amount that they put on the police, or public safety impact fee, and make sure you're competitive, okay? And within our letter that we had submitted, we already asked, gave you some recommendations. One of the recommendations would be to reevaluate Section LW002 in regards to future parking spaces needed. Currently, the Civic Center has assigned you a hundred and sixty-two parking spaces. Currently, you have seventy-two sworn officers with the hopes of hiring seven more. Currently, you have 72 sworn officers with the hopes of hiring seven more due to demand, which will put you at 79. The current ratio for parking is one, for every one sworn officer, there is two parking spaces. So the 79 times two gives you 158, and the current amount of spacing that you already have meets the criteria. So you don't, you can reduce that amount. Right now, you've allocated 270,000, just over $270,000 for the future parking spaces. So we ask you to look at that and reevaluate that, and if possible, to reduce the price or the cost. Another aspect would be looking at section LW001 in regards to the square footage for the allocation of new square footage for your police facility. You guys set the market-going rate at 525, $525 per square foot. Nowhere in the report does it state how you came about that number. So if you can clarify that, I would greatly appreciate that. But another recommendation to reduce the cost would be looking into the same section.
Sorry, his three minutes are up.
So we just ask you to, direct staff to reevaluate the, look at surrounding cities and make sure that the city is competitive amongst the other cities within the region. Thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, anyone else wishing to speak? And this is opposing the actual proposal, the fees.
Lord City Council, under this public hearing, number 10, and then you go down to number one, says you had this done in December 30th, 2015, completed and reviewed and cost specialist. Now, you're going to do it again? Is that what you're telling us? Because over here on the backside, the next page on number 11, seems like you people love wasting our money. I know I bring it up, but let me tell you, wasting money, you had it done last year, now you're going to do it again? If you look at it, you're doing it last year, this year, next year, and then the year after that, pretty soon. Where are you getting all this money? That's the problem. We don't have sufficient money to cover everything you guys want to spend. It's a lot of money you people are talking about, not a few dollars. It's a lot of money. And this is what I'm trying to tell you people up there and the residents of Baldwin Park. We got to quit spending money year after year doing the same thing. It costs us a lot of taxpayers' money. Think about that. When you guys pass something, you're saying, ah, good, city, Baldwin Park, you got to pay more. That's not right. You had it done last year, you want it again this year, next year. How many times you got to do it? How much money are we making off of the old equipment that we're getting rid of? Nobody ever says anything about the old equipment. All you know, it's gone. Well, where is all that money? I'm pretty sure you don't give it away. If you do, you're not running a business very good. You have to play a businessman. The company I work for, they, everything they did was business. You people got to do the same thing. You should be in business for the city residents, not just one, or two, or three, or four, or five. You should do it for all of us. Nobody ever tells us how much money we make off of junk or used vehicles of any kind. You have never said, hey, we sold all the junk we had, made a couple bucks. You never tell us anything. And then when somebody asks you gentlemen and ladies up there a question, you know what you tell us? Go up City Hall, go to the second floor, buy the copy and read it. That's why you're here. We put you in office so you could do the answers that these people need, but you, no, you ignore it. The chief of police should give a report on how much money we make on sold property that is no longer used. You people up there, when you drive a vehicle from Baldwin Park, you should think, man, look all the money that I'm wasting. Gentlemen mentioned you people got to raise on all the priorities that you need. Why? You're spending money like it's just there to throw away. It isn't. We need to progress. The mayor keeps saying we got to progress. Well, we ain't doing it the right way, I'll tell you that. You need to spend money wisely and make sure, my time's up?
Yes. All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much. All right, Mo Long.
Greg Tuttel, business owner. The police know that I support him 1,000 percent. But I'm very concerned on the city management of this money. I call it a slush fund. We see how the, when Manny Carrillo was in charge of the parks and recs of doing all the, when the builders and the developers would pay a fee, which they still pay for parks and rec. All they do is keep redoing the parks. They don't put new parks in. And then they demand that schools use their land. Now, the thing is, you can only rebuild a water park so many times. You need to figure it out the first time. Same thing here, when we, when we do this attachment, your building permits, I want to, I'm bringing back one thing here. Building permits, I had a contractor come in and a personal friend that he had, went from a one-phase to three-phase electricity. You know how much the permit cost him just to change that from the city? $750. That is ridiculous. Any other city you go and gauge it off of is a third that price, but not Baldwin Park. You discourage development in here. You discourage developers to come in. You raise these kind of prices. This fee that you're going to do on this police stuff is going to be put into the side. I don't mind them getting fees for cars and everything else. They have asset forfeiture monies for that also. But this added fee you're doing is a slush fund to hide and use. And the thing is, you can't even take care of the parks and rec. And now you're going to go in and take care of the police association that taking all this money? I fought for these guys to get the mold out of their bathrooms because the city wouldn't do anything. I fought to get the city roof fixed because the city council wouldn't do anything. You know, this thing is ridiculous, what you're trying to do and discourage development in this city. You're trying to keep raising everything. You bring in Rome, they give them numerous thousands of dollars to Monica and Manny for their elections and Pacheco. You know, this thing's got to stop. And you guys got to realize that these developers are not made out of money, and these homes are only going to be able to cost so much. And you keep $700, and then you add up the homes or the condos. I don't know if you're going to lower it down for a condo because it's going to be half the square footage of a house. You people need to understand, all you're doing is creating revenue, but you don't put it in the right places. And the other thing is, where's our new officers? We've been funded for two years. We made a new budget. We came in, we gave raises so that we could bring in new officers. Where are they at? We still got five officers patrolling the street. That's it. We got more that are setting inside that could help, but where's our new officers? We got the funding, we got money. What's going on? The same thing's going to happen with this slush fund. You guys are going to hide it, and you're going to use it for something else. Just like the business fund. That business fund is made for businesses to increase businesses and help the businesses. The fireworks does not help any business in this city. You guys are misusing that fund, and we used it for the street fair, and it helped the businesses. I'm tired of you guys.
All right, thank you. Okay, Mo Long, anyone wish to speak against the actual proposed project?
I'm not necessarily opposed. I'm just understand, I don't understand why you don't just take it from that $20,000 you're already getting for new construction. Take it from there. Why add more? Unless, of course, these lawsuits and things, I don't know. If you're getting the money from the general fund to do it now, to give them their new vehicles and other things they need, why not continue to take it from there? You say you got $5 million and more coming in, but of course, the litigation's going to put a strain on that. So maybe that's why you really need a $740. And what about the condos and townhouses and things like that? Is it going to be $740 for each unit? That'd be a lot of money if that's the case. You haven't made that clear either. Is it just houses? Or is it the condos and things of this type? No, no answer, huh? Figures, that's par for the course here. It just seems like it's just money, money, money. Everybody wants, they want now, they want to talk about doing away with gas tax and charges by the mile. It just doesn't stop. I know of a place that applied for a business license here. They were over there for a year. And as soon as they applied for that license, you said, oh, you can't have that business there unless you tear that building down and build another one for a million dollars. Then you can have your business. You know what happened? They moved to Azusa. They moved to Azusa. And they're actually better off because they got a place in Montebello, too. Pacheco country over there. So they're, they're better off. I don't know, maybe they should have gave some money to your campaigns in November, and you might have looked the other way, and they'd have been able to stay here in Baldwin Park. It was a construction business. You ran it out of there. You wanted them to tear down the house that's there and build a warehouse building. It's the only single-family residence over there. But see, you're not business-friendly at all. You could have left them there. You could have gave them a waiver. It's a semi-industrial, light industrial area anyway. What difference will it make? There's only one house over there. It's all concrete now. I call it the concrete jungle. There's concrete all over. There's like 8,000 square feet of concrete there. I mean, it's just totally ridiculous. You had a business that could have paid business taxes and stuff? Nope. Because you claim it's a single-family residence, they couldn't have their business there, so they moved to Azusa and Montebello. That's really going to help the tax base for the officers and other facilities to have money to fix things.
Thomas, you.
What about those lights over at the park? Why don't you spend some money on that for the safety of the youth that you so boldly care about?
Okay, all right, Thomas, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Okay, Mo Long, anyone wishing to speak against? Okay, now I will go ahead and entertain those that are willing to speak for and support. Okay, see no further interest, I will now declare the public hearing closed. Council members have any questions?
Mayor, yes, I have a question. In regards to the funds, and I think it's a great idea because with new development, and especially with the Rome apartments that are going next door and a possibility of other apartment buildings in large density coming into the city, we will definitely need more officers. I've always said that we're understaffed, and we should have more officers in order to keep the safety of our city, especially as it gets more and more congested. How are the funds going to be put into, directly into the police or asset forfeiture fund? Who will monitor that when we're having the audit committee meetings that we have? Will, will that be something that we can look at depending on what developers came in, how many came in, and who paid what depending on either units, dwellings, or whatever it is? I would really like assurance that that money is going directly to what it's earmarked to do, which is for our police department. So I need, I need to know that.
Okay, yeah.
If I could, Mayor, answer that question.
Sure.
Yeah, the funds will be collected by the building department because they're collected at the time of the building permit issuance. But they will go into an entirely new created account that finance will create. It will be a new fund number. The monies will go directly into that account. Finance department will keep a detailed accounting of all monies that come in, all monies that go out. For any money that is spent, there will be a paper trail and an accounting for it. It could be subject to auditing if need be. And for the most part, because generally, these type of expenditures are over 25,000, for the most part, those expenditures would then also be coming before the city council for your approval for the most cases. If we're buying vehicles, those facility improvements, those, those things generally would come to city council for your approval. So yeah, there is a detailed paper trail, and there will be accounting of all the funds.
I have a comment as well. You know, I sure some of Councilmember Cruzbaca's concerned. I mean, I've been very outspoken about being against spending business tax improvement funds on entertainment. I've been very vocal about it. And so for me, it's tight language as well, you know, where we know where that money is going. Because, you know, I know that it's coming back to city council for approval, but the tax fund also came back for city council approval. And I personally still don't feel it was, it helps the businesses, which is what it's intended to do. So I also would like to see really tight language in terms of how it's going to be spent. And I don't want, like, you know, and I'm not talking about this generation of council members, but future council members. We want to make sure that, you know, different ideas change at different times where council members cannot take that decision themselves, where it's very clear in the language that, that, that funding's going to police officers, and there's no way that we can change it and decide, well, this is police-related, so let's spend it here. So I would like to also see very, very tight language. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor?
Thank you, Councilman Ricardo Pacheco. I know there's issues and concerns about how this money's being collected and then spent. If you read the staff report, which was very thoroughly done, it explains a lot of that information. The, on item one, is one of the gentleman that spoke here under public hearing number 10, item number one, that discusses a equipment development impact fee calculation and excess report dated December 30, 2015. That is on the agenda, but is also, the full report is actually in item number 10. And if you read that full report, you'll also note that the money is actually designated within that report. So if there's concerns that the money's going to be somehow misspent, they can't do that because the money here and how it's accounted for is already being outlined here on this, on this report. And that's on chapter one of the report titled, "The Law Enforcement Facilities, Vehicles, and Equipment Development Impact Fee calculation and excess report." So that's item number 10. Maybe you guys should get a hold of this. And I think if the community reads this, because it's a public document that's in the website, and if you do a little homework and read it, then you'll find out that, how this money is actually being spent. And so if you were to turn to, for example, page, where is that? Did I see that here? Page nine of the report under chapter two states that it would be used for, and I won't go into all the specifics because it gets very detailed, but law enforcement facility expansions, law enforcement parking structure expansion, law enforcement fleet expansion, law enforcement specialty communications electronics, and specialty expandable equipment. So it, law enforcement officer assigned equipment. So there's already identified expenditures that you can, that this, this funding is going to be used for and only for that. And I'm sure when they do the annual audits each year, they're going to make sure that this money was properly done. So there are mechanisms in place to make sure that that money, the accounting for that money shows up somehow. Every, every month when we do our accounting, you see it on the, on the, in our reports, we always show what fund it comes out of, so that's how it's also another way to, to track that funding. So I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with, with that this has tight language, that this has exactly what the funding's going to be spent for. And I think staff did a good job in delineating how this funding was going to be taking place and, and the requirements for it, and the, actually, the, the understanding as to how the, you know, how they substantiated to be able to charge the kinds of funds that they're, and fees that they're looking at to cover some of the police cause. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Yes, Vice Mayor Monica Garcia.
Thank you. I, I don't doubt that these funds will be restricted and will be used as intended and per the language of this proposal. Where I think, you know, my concerns lie would be similar to what Al Contreras mentioned earlier. And I think that I would like to be better informed, and I'd like our council to look at kind of what is the big picture as far as our fees? How do we compare against the surrounding cities? And, you know, just knowing that we're going through a process right now of gathering that information, and how soon will that information be presented back? Shannon?
The comprehensive fee study that we're working on, we're hoping to have it back to you in May or June. We're hoping to have it coincide with the budget. We're hoping to have it coincide with the budget.
So given that, I mean, it's April 20th, and if we're having a comprehensive fee study that will be brought back to us in May or June, I would ask that we hold on this item and then take it up when we are looking at all of the fees. This way, we can also look at how, how much of these fees have been, have accrued, have been accumulated over the, the last few years? Where have those fees gone? And we just start to get a better picture because, like I said, I don't doubt that this specific item is going to be used as intended, but I just wanna, I want us to look at the bigger picture. So I would ask that we hold off until we get that comprehensive fee. It's not very long. It's gonna be what, about a month, a month and a half? And then take up the item at that time so that we're, we're just, we're not, you know, we're not in the dark on the bigger picture.
Well, I like, you know, because this is a first reading, from what I understand, right?
That is correct. First reading will come back for a second.
It still has to come back. I like to move forward with the first reading, but really sit down and get that report and just figure out, like I said, just go, for me personally, go in detail in the language. But I wanna move forward with the first reading and, and again, have that opportunity to see that, that information between now and then. And then just tighten up, you know, what all of us, our concerns are, and then we'll see on the second reading how we move forward. Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, so at this point...
I agree with Councilmember Rubio.
Okay, so is, did you make a, was that a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
I second.
Any objections? All right, so no objections, okay, we'll move forward with that.
And just to be clear for the audience, this is a first reading, so we haven't necessarily approved it. This is just a reading that, it'll come back and we'll have an opportunity to have dialogue over, um, all the items. Thank you.
Right, and also Vice Mayor Monica Garcia also mentioned to adopt other methods, so we're able to, uh, check and balance this particular subject as well. So we'll bring that back with further information.
Yes, and I, I just need to clarify something, Mayor and council members. My concern, not because of the fees that it's going to our police department, but I definitely want to see more of transparency in the accounting because, and it's not, and not be left up to the council vote. Because if I remember correctly, VJ Singal used some of the asset forfeiture money, money to finish that parking structure, which was supposed to have been used by our police department. At that time, our police department was on the verge of the sheriffs coming in, so how could we possibly use it if the majority of the council wanted to bring in the sheriffs? The second is that not until recently did our police department start using that parking structure. So there was asset forfeiture money that I believe that was used that shouldn't have been used. So that's what I'm concerned about.
Mayor, I just wanna again repeat that. If you look at the, the study and what's, and the direction that staff gets to use this money, I mean, it's very specific on how the money is, is being used. You know, I'm sure our staff, our chief of police and their staff will make sure that this money is being spent the way that it should be. And I have a new finance director, so I'm sure there's a, there's a big difference from the staff we have today than we have in the past. And I believe that, that this funding money will be used appropriately.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, can I clarify your motion, Councilmember Rubio? I understood your motion to be adopt resolution number 20, adopt resolution number 2016-114, entitled "Resolution of the City Council of Baldwin Park Adopting Fees for Law Enforcement Facilities, Vehicles, and Equipment Infrastructure Throughout the City," and to waive the first reading and adopt by title only the ordinance number 1386, entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of City of Baldwin Park," enabling the city council to set the fees relating to the new development impact fees for law enforcement facilities, vehicles, and equipment. Was, was that your motion that we voted on?
Yes, and I second.
Okay, I would second. No objections.
And can we amend that to have this item brought back for the second reading at the time that we're taking up the, the study?
Make the motion.
There's already a motion in a second.
Can I, can I amend that to include? Would I be able to amend, amend the motion to bring this item back for the second reading at the time that this comprehensive fee study is being presented? Because that's what we discussed here on the dais.
You can make that amendment and then it would be voted on.
Okay, so that would be my amendment, would be to bring it back for the second, second reading?
Is that a, we're gonna do this a motion?
That is a motion.
That's my motion.
A second, any objections? Seeing none, so move. All right. Okay, so at this point, I think that's the only public hearing that we have. We, we'll go over to the, um, Reports of Officers, Options for City Council to Consider Annual Audit Services. Do we need to go through this or can we bring it back?
No, what I would just suggest is to go ahead and do item number one, and instead of doing it, getting the, a two-year-old RFP, to go ahead and do an RFP and, and bring it back with any new applicants.
All right, so is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, second, my Councilmember Cruzbaca, any objections? Seeing none, so move. All right, item number 12, which is Approval Resolution Number 2016-017, entitled "A Resolution of the City Council..."
Mayor, can we move that to the next meeting?
Okay, make a motion?
I'll second.
That a motion?
I'll second.
Second, any objections? Seeing none, so move. Item 13, Reports on Eminent Domain Issues Related to Affordable Housing.
Mr. Mayor, the city attorney, I will make a oral report on this, and I have a memorandum Uh, Mr. Mayor, you had previously asked under Reports and Officers to look into the eminent domain law and to give you and the rest of the city council information related to eminent domain and how the city can or cannot use eminent domain, given that the eminent domain law has changed recently. I've adopted a memo for you, which you can read at your leisure, but I'll summarize it for you now. Eminent domain has changed. You used to be able to use eminent domain for virtually any purpose, including private development, uh, shopping centers, things of that nature. That is no longer allowed. You can only use affordable housing for a public use now. That could be things like a parking structure, a park, open space, affordable housing, things of that nature. Other than that, you would not be able to eminent domain any property in the city of Baldwin Park other than for a public use. For example, um, our last affordable housing project here in Baldwin Park was Rome One, Phase One. That is an affordable housing project. Eminent domain could've been used in that case. It didn't need to be because most of that land belonged to the city. But that's an example of things that eminent domain can still be used for. Open space, parking, affordable housing, things of that nature. As you heard here earlier, the state mandates that the city provide affordable housing, and we actually have quotas that we have to meet over a period of years. So that's why the courts have determined that public housing is a public use because we are required to provide it. So, uh, I can answer any questions?
Let me, well, let me ask you, because you brought that up. So, so technically and legally, we could have used eminent domain on, on Phase One of the actual Rome project? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct, because it was an affordable housing project.
Oh, so there wasn't affordable housing, then it could not have been used.
That's right. So if it was a private development and they were just selling single-family residences and it was a private developer, you could not use eminent domain if you were going at market rates. If you're doing affordable housing, you can use eminent domain.
So this would have qualified, had, had, had the option of us necessitated for us to use that?
If you had decided to do that, you could have, you could have done that.
Interesting, okay.
May I ask a question, Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
So my question to the attorney is, for public use, I, I know that for schools and streets and I guess sewer systems, those are public uses, so I understood that when we develop and change, you could use eminent domain in that case. But this is now saying that affordable housing, there's law that, that allows for affordable housing to be used for eminent domain? Is that, is that correct?
Affordable housing has been determined by, uh, the courts of California to be a public use. Eminent domain can be used for any public use.
Any public use.
Yes, however, there are some exceptions. The, the city would have to provide just compensation for anything that they would eminent domain. In addition, you cannot eminent domain residential property any longer, so we're just talking about commercial property. But you couldn't eminent domain a residential property to give that property to a third party. That's, that's no longer allowed under the current law.
Okay, so let me just restate what you said then. So eminent domain cannot be used to acquire residential property, just commercial property?
That's right.
Or industrial property? Okay, all right.
And, and let me clarify that. You can't use residential property, can't take residential property and give it to a third-party private owner. You can eminent domain residential property if it's like, uh, a parking structure or something of that nature.
For public use.
Actual, yeah. The, the city is going to retain ownership of that property. In other words, you can't take a residential property and transfer it to a third party. If you want to eminent domain a residential property and keep it for the city and it's a public use, you can do that.
Okay.
I have a question. What do they determine affordable housing? Is it just a percentage of, of like next door at the Rome project? It's only a small percentage. It's affordable housing, actually. The other are market value. So what is the percentage of, of, um, of the affordable housing in order to qualify or in order for you to justify the eminent domain?
That's a good question. I didn't look at any particular project, so I didn't analyze that in that context, but I can do that for you.
Could you?
Yes, I will do that.
That's for educator, okay, thank you. All right, thank you for that report. Okay, at this point, we're, I'm gonna go ahead, um, real quick question because this, that was the last subject we had on there, am I correct? Before the adjournment of the city meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Just wanna say something that we might wanna implement. Rose has nothing to do with you. The city of Placentia, their, their finance director embezzled, there was 4.3 million dollars that was unaccounted for, and there was 1.5, excuse me, 1.5 that was accounted out of the 4.3 million. Now, obviously, when we make decisions here, we don't have our hands on the cash or anything. So, wonder if we could work on something, and I don't know how we would do this, CEO, is to look, some type of check and balance. Because we could be here, someone could be elected here a number of years, and of course, it's, it's on the finance, CEO, the decisions, those that have direct contact with the deposit into the actual banks themselves. So I'm trying to see, what can we develop so that there's a check and balance? Not to say that what happened in Placentia could potentially, but I think that, to me, that kinda, um, send a red flag for us to be able to be prepared. I mean, does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, Mayor, I think, and, and I'll let the expert tell us how that's accounted. There, there are rules and there's systems in place to check that. What this individual did, because I read the same article, was he went and opened a bank account in his name, from what I understand, and then began to transfer money, not because he was the one in charge of transferring those funds, he thought he wouldn't get caught, but the, the bank is also looking at, you know, large transfers, and they're gonna raise flags on that end if, if there was these kinds of transfers. But I don't know what else, you know, they have. I'm, I'm not the expert, but maybe we could do more to be more secure? I don't know. Or maybe staff could tell us what is in place to safeguard the city.
And again, and again, you know what? Yeah, and I'm glad, I'm not, I'm not finger pointing, but I'm just saying, in other words, I know that we, I know that we have check and balances, but I'm just, you know, this kind of like interesting that, yeah, I did read the fact that this guy created his own bank account and was just, and ended up 4.3 million dollars, of which only 1.5 was recuperated. But go ahead.
If I could comment real quick, and Rose can add anything if she wants to. That's one thing that the auditors do each year, is they do tests and they do make sure that we have the proper checks and balances. I don't know, and we'll certainly look into Placentia to find out what went wrong with their checks and balances. I know we did the same thing. There was an embezzlement in Pasadena, and I know the finance department and the auditors took a detailed look at our books and what happened there to make sure that that could not happen here. So there are checks and balances. We can talk with the auditors to see if they have any other suggestions. And I don't know if, Rose, if you had anything to add?
Uh, yes, hi, Honorable Mayor. Actually, now, we have a, a very good check and balance in place currently. Our system, the direct deposit, we have to, um, set up the account that, where the money is going to with the bank and pre-authorize that. For example, we have a bond payment twice a year. We have to set up the receiv, uh, receiving, uh, account from the bondholder or we have a trustee, which is the, for example, US Bank. We have to set that up and saying, oh, that bond payment is 1 million, something like that. Then my accountant will set that up and I have to approve that. Like, the, uh, the bank cannot just send money to me or to anybody as a direct deposit. We have to set that up first and then verify with the other bank.
Okay.
Well, oh.
Hold on, let me just say, let me say real quick, yeah, and I'm glad you brought, they, that Placentia also had their auditor, audit their accounts every year, and it still happened. But go ahead.
Yes, but Mayor, that's, that's one of the things that we discuss at the audit committee meetings. And since we meet quarterly, it's not only to see how the budget is, it's also to see and to ask questions about, um, how certain fees are collected. Are they being collected? What is being spent on certain, on certain items and in certain departments? And those are all things that are brought to everybody, especially to, to, now to, to Ms. Tam's attention because she is the finance director, but also the auditors that come in. We ask them questions as to, how do you go about knowing about these fees or those fees or whatever in order to keep tabs of what's being spent and how it's being spent?
I would also add that during our audit committee, we added, I would say, maybe five to 10 new checks and balances for certain fees, you know, towing fees. And so we did set up some safeguards that were not implemented before. So there's a few things that we've added and we did look very closely into that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, so at this point, that's all I have to say. I'm gonna move for the adjournment of the city council. That is my motion second. Any objections? Seeing none, so move. I'll open up, um, to be pretty quick, yes.
Mayor, real quickly, I'm sorry, before you close, I do, I do want to make an announcement because I did attend the first Business Watch meeting, and thank you very much to the chief for sending Cynthia Valdez to meet with some of the business owners on Ramona. For those of you that have a chance to be able to please attend those, it's very informative. I learned a lot about tinted windows and why you shouldn't do this, and especially